To the staff meeting today, I hope everybody had a nice weekend and enjoyed the President's Day celebrations yesterday. So with that, we'll start off on our Tuesday.
And good morning, Chairman of the Commission. Today's, it is a follow-up to Friday. We had a budget retreat workshop on Friday, took some notes. In front of you, you have a list of what we're calling commission priorities. It's also up here on the flip chart. We'll go one at a time. So we'll go through these, make sure that these are accurate and they reflect the conversation we had on Friday. And then Lindsay's got about just a few cleanup items moving forward. She'd like to talk about, I think we can get this all done in an hour or less. So we'll start with this list of priorities if we go one at a time. I would think as we look at this under com care, we just, the bullet points are what we recorded hearing you guys say on Friday. So if we missed something, we'll gladly add it. Or if we misinterpreted something, we'll gladly change it. And I don't know if it's much as was a discussion of com care as it was a discussion of mental health globally. So we read that as a priority of commission. These are in no particular order. We can order them if you want. But I just need to know what to move staff forward with as far as actually putting some work behind this and/or schedule a workshop to further dig into what you guys want to talk about. So if you take a second and look at that list and any comments or questions.
Okay, my observation, the first bullet, best practices. Are you asking, we're not, the commissioners are not trying to tell com care what's the best practice. Is that right? You're just doing an internal evaluation of best practices?
I think the commission would hope for best practices from com care. That's how I interpret.
Yeah. I mean, if you would like, we could have Joan come in and say, describe what CCB, again, CCDC is best practice. And so she could describe where we're at in that process, where we're maybe a year into it now, if you'd like. Or, again, it's your time. But she would certainly be able to describe to you that, we talked a little bit about opioids and that sort of treatment related to that. Whatever you'd like.
Thank you. About a year ago, when we changed this model of how to fund the com care a little bit, we had estimates of huge increases in the amount of money coming out of the com care. But I don't know what that does to our budget. Are we really seeing those huge increases that we were briefing on, briefed on? And if so, what does that do to the overall com care budget?
We're seeing significant increases. Again, it's all dependent on staff. And so as we build positions, as the workforce becomes more robust and available to us, increases will continue. But we are seeing increases. And I think that probably for the 24 budget, this budget plus cash and whatever, we'll see as we go. We can do, we can give you an update if that's what you'd like.
Well, it was significant amount. I don't remember off the top of my head, but it was millions of dollars of increase on how much funding we were going to get. And so how, if we do have those millions of increases in funding, how are we going to put that towards com care so that we can alleviate some of the staffing prices and the other things that we're facing?
Those millions fund the positions that we use to deliver staff and pays for the increases in salaries that we enter. So it all fits together. Because we've got a new reimbursement model, we get paid more for the people that we have to deliver services rather than short. In the old model, it was uncommon for the payment to cover the cost of the service, particularly medical services. New blended funding model means that we're going to see revenue to cover the costs of service delivery, which allows us to hire more people to deliver more services. But the increase in revenue is being offset by the increase in expenditures tied to the costs.
And so what you're saying is that we can increase staffing of com care to take care of more of the people, but we're not going to have to increase the amount of funding that's coming out of general funds in order to be able to do all that?
Unless there's specific programming that you'd like us to add in addition. Right. Right now, the model, the attempt is that the increase in revenue will offset the increasing costs for sale.
Thank you.
Could you clarify, a question and comment, what percentage of the com care budget is coming from the general fund? Four or five percent? I mean, it's
Between five and 10, yeah.
Okay.
Very small.
And then I think regardless of best practices, one of the things that we did talk about that I think would be incredibly helpful is, is to have Joan prepare the comprehensive plan, what a magic wand looks like in this community, that if we could, this is what it would look like to really meet the need for mental health substance abuse behavior.
Can we work in the early to find that, or maybe not? Do you want Joan to talk about what Joan can do as a C and H C and a CCBHC in the community, which is different than what the community is responsible?
So I, well, I, candidly, what I'd like to see is Joan, who runs com care and is our resident expert in this area, I'd like her opinion on what, to give us a diagnosis of this community and what a real approach would look like in this community. I think that would, that's squarely in her purview to tell this commission, a comprehensive plan, not just com care's role, but in general. Some of the things that we're talking about in this community, that this board of county commission is going to touch, isn't fully com care's purview. And I think that we need her opinion of, this is how these things will overlap, and this is what a comprehensive plan will look like or could look like in this community. Not that we can fund it all, or not that we can do it all, but I think we need to paint a more clear vision of what could be.
About some of the other bullets, they're
So I think we can have Joan come in, she can talk about best practices, I think she can talk about, she can give an update on her staffing and how it's becoming stable. I think she can talk about practice from a quality perspective. And then Commissioner Dennis will talk about budget specifically. Then the last two bullets, how the pieces fit together in the funding option, that's where we begin to get more global. And she'll be prepped and ready to talk about what her position on that. All right. Now I'm ready, Chairman. Next.
Okay. And on the, I think it's kind of fluid, the biomed center. There are portions of com care that would match nicely into the center. We just don't know for sure which, yet, as it, we're not locating all of com care into the biomed center. We're talking the relevant pieces that would complement a university center.
Correct. Yeah. We have to build a new crisis center. Because the crisis center that we have doesn't meet the community's needs.
Right.
The biomed center would be a great fit for that, if the biomed center's going to happen at a timely way.
Right. Okay.
If it is, I think it makes sense for the crisis center to be located within that campus.
Okay. And we're in tune with Dr. Moon and KU on it?
Yeah. And then the only other thing that came out of the biomed campus, we could, the crisis center has been talked about being dovetailed into that from the beginning. What has come up recently, as we talked briefly about this on Friday, was what's the health department's role in this, if any, commission going to move anything down there. And I'm not even sure if WSU, KU have even, you know, explored that at all. So that's the only other loose hanging piece out there.
Very good. Any other questions, comments? Okay. Thank you.
I'm looking at you from a calendar, calendar perspective, Lindsay. We would set this for like a workshop. We'll have Joan come in on this workshop day.
Yeah. And I, so that will be a topic we get to is what type of workshops commissioners want to have. And then we'll try and stagger those. Some of them will be before your May hearings so that you have more background. Some may make sense to wait until you hear all of that and schedule those after that. This one, to me, makes sense to have between now and May, as kind of background conversation.
Can I add a point, Chairman?
Yeah.
It would also make sense, obviously, this comprehensive plan, I think the sheriff touches substance abuse and mental health in such a way, I think it might be wise to be able to add his input in some of this, Tim. I don't know if that's separate of Joan's comprehensive reporter. We cannot approach mental health substance abuse on this in com care. We can't approach you without the sheriff being involved and having some input of what's happening at the general and the wraparound services.
Agreed.
Good idea. Good suggestion.
Okay.
Working our way down the list, compensation.
Chart flipper.
Oh, good. I'm pretty sure, but I'll see what I can pull up here. Dana, I am not.
I guess I thought on Friday, from the beginning, this would be a workshop on the side. We would bring Sheena in, she would lead us through this. She kind of covered staff stability and overview of staffing and turnover and open positions on Friday, refresh that, bring some comparatives in, have a laundry list of benefits that we currently don't offer, that if the commission wants to consider offering, we should talk about. And then give you a deep dive on PT, which is a total revamp of how we manage sick and vacation.
Yeah. I think that'd be wise.
And just additional to that.
Well, you've made a lot of progress. I think it's matured into refining and clarifying the areas, questions and doubts. I think it'd be helpful if you were able to say, all right, we did this, and the impact has been very positive in this department, or this overall. We did this, found that it really didn't have any impact. There's nothing wrong with the truth as far as this compensation, from our perspective, making the decisions. So I think that'd be helpful. I think we've all had, not overwhelming, we've all had our share of emails from employees saying thank you. I haven't had too many in Holland. I think early, there's, what's that word? You've used it before, right?
Compression.
Compression. There's some compression questions. I haven't had any of those recently. And so I think we're, it's a good time to, for us to feel real comfortable about mission direction. Speaking on behalf of this whole thing.
The seating arrangement has changed for David's advantage and for Commissioner Lopez's advantage. So if anybody's working, okay. Yes. There was one point that was made that when I asked you afterwards, I think it'd be helpful that the other commissioners were in the loop, ask you about the 19% turnover rate. Because when I saw that, I thought, wow, one out of five, please. But that's actually rather in line, isn't it? Did I hear that correctly?
Yeah. Turnover is healthy.
Right.
Yeah.
And some of that is people retiring, some of it is. But I saw 19%. My mind went to one out of five people, or we're losing one out of five people. But that's actually a rather healthy number. It's, the number is in line?
Yeah. So we can, we can refresh those numbers as time goes on.
We had talked about, we had, I think Sheena went back five years. And what's odd about five years that had COVID years, we could go back 10, and I think you would see that that number becomes relatively stable.
I trust that. I just, that was news to me. And I thought that was, that was helpful to understand that, that history. The second thing that I'd ask about, the one thing that I do hear from employees of Central County is, I think most people are very thankful for last year's commission and the work that was done with staff and HR and finance in regards to get them to a healthier level. It is that compression in specific departments. And you said that you guys have been able to target where these compression areas have been hit hardest, or where there's, you've been able to identify either specific classifications or specific employees even. You've been able to target some of those things, and that'll be a focus?
That's very, that's helpful.
Good.
And while we're talking about compression, I think the goal is, I think we're going to tap that this year. There is contingency compensation budget. We may or may not spend, it's other question, whether we spend them up. If we talk, I think, mid-year this year, we might go down that path. But I think we can have Sheena report on that as well, as she can. If it's not, I don't think, it's not overwhelming, but we have pockets in the organization where it's clear that we have compression problems. Okay. Let's do, drainage and flood and fleet were offshoots during the greater discussion, we reported them, because the commission, if you look at the top, these are your priorities, how you want us to manage through budget for 2024. So is there anything other than comprehensive analysis on drainage and fleet that we, the commission want?
Go ahead.
As far as drainage and flood, the comprehensive analysis, I think, has been done.
Yep.
We know exactly what we need to do. It's just, it's a billion dollars. So the issue isn't trying to do a study and find out what's flooding. The issue is how do we fix it? So I don't know. But the comprehensive analysis, I don't think is about worry.
I guess maybe a better question, do you want that brought back to a staff meeting and talk about it? And do you want to consider throwing money at it?
But I don't know where we get the money to throw at it. That's the problem. Billion dollars. We can't provide it all over the time. I know that Commissioner Allen's recommended some kind of a tax increase, but I don't know that that would ever pass.
I, I'm not recommending a tax increase. I am saying that the government that we have here is the people's government. They only do what the people want us to do and nothing more. If they want this to be addressed, and I think there's a lot of folks out there that are, that are suffering and have been impacted by a poor drainage plan for the county, they may want the county to step up and do something, and they're willing to put their money behind it. It's up to them to choose whether they want us to do this or not. Now, we know Johnson County, back in 1980, I think it was, passed a small tax, sales tax, actually. I think it was a sales tax.
10%.
That generated, generated 100. How much does that generate? 10 million a year? 15 million?
For us, it would be. For them, it's much more.
But it was, what was their percentage?
It was 1/10th of a
1/10th of a percent?
Yes.
Okay. And, and they, and they leveraged that money with cities to provide infrastructure for drainage. I'm not saying we should do this. I'm not saying, I'm not saying that's the right answer. I'm saying that we throw our hands up and act like there's nothing we can do. I don't think that's the right answer. I think the answer is, you ask the people, who is their money? What do you want us to do? You want us to deal with this? Then provide the revenue, we'll do it. If you don't want us to do it, then vote no. I'm not in favor of a tax increase. Please don't say that. I'm in favor of letting the people determine what they want us to do. So again, SMAP has been meaning over the years, and then they, they get to a conclusion and nothing happens. The commission basically throws their hands up and says, we have no money. We don't. I agree. We're not going to, we're not ever going to get past that point unless we intend to put it in front of the people, say, what do you want us to do, if anything? I would recommend, though, that if there was a revenue stream, we should take care of the Mitch McConnell floodway. It should be something we would leverage against cities that want to participate with the county to come up with projects. And by the way, Johnson County does not do street maintenance. They, they work on infrastructure. And I just, I think their model actually is a good model for us to look at. We have talked and talked and talked, and I'm just tired of the talk. But I guarantee you, by doing nothing, we're waiting for criticism, the floods will come back, and we're going to sit back and look at each other like, what happened? Well, here we are again. This has happened every few years. So I'm just, to let this come off our list like we forgot about it, is not, is not the right answer. I'm willing to say, let the people choose. But I'm okay with a no. I'm not an advocate for tax increase. Thank you.
If we're going to let the people choose, we need to be comprehensive about that on what we have them choose. Because the drainage and flooding, even if it's a 10th of a cent sales tax, isn't going to solve some of the other big problems that we have in the county that we may need a sales tax increase on. So if you're going to put something for the voters, it needs to be a well-thought-out package that has all of the different needs that are needed within the county and that we can stand behind and advocate for.
So this is, this is called priorities. And I don't know, you know, we talk about mental health as our number one priority. We have the same discussion if we talk about mental health. We can talk, we can ask the state and the federal government to solve this problem, but I have no faith in that they're going to solve this problem. We see a mental health hospital looking forward somewhat, and that's encouraging. And maybe that's enough. But in terms of everything else on our ideal list, it's not going to be funded through revenue that we currently have. See, the people want us to solve that, and they're willing to put some money behind it, or they're not. Again, I don't want to presume I know what people think. I just want to say, if that's the highest priority on this list, let the people, tell us that's what they want us to do. And then let's go do it. Let's be efficient and effective. Let's go do what the people tell us to do. But by not asking the people, by assuming that we can cover this with existing revenues, it's just, and I'm not interested in property taxes being the answer on any of this. So I'm glad this, I'm glad that these are on those list of priorities. But none of these things are going to happen without revenue. Revenue, revenue is answered to any of these.
We need to look at comprehensively, and what else would have to go into that. I don't want to put forth, say, a 10th cent, a 10th of a cent sales tax, and then say, well, we still got a mental health issue, we still got a fentanyl issue, which is going to get worse every day, we still got a jail overcrowding issue, we've got all kinds of issues. So if we're going to put something forward and ask the public if they're interested in supporting that, we need to make sure that we put everything forward rather than piecemeal this stuff.
Response, now, yeah, I agree. I don't know if you want to package it together or not. When you talk, package four things together, I think it failed because of one of the four things wasn't something that people apparently wanted. It was the economic development part of that question. I think it'll be on a three, in my personal opinion. So again, do I think people want to solve, help, help reduce some mental health problems in Central County? I firmly believe they want us to do something. I firmly believe they want us to do something with drainage. Maybe those can be packaged together. But if you package it together, maybe it'll, maybe it'll help it pass, maybe it'll help it fail. I don't know. It might be better for them to be separate, and maybe together, you might say, it's some other number. Maybe it's a 10th of a cent, but you split it up in a certain way, you know, create a county policy that says, here's how the money is going to be utilized, just split up 60/40. Or, you know, maybe it's split up, maybe it's a 15, it's 0.15%. And you split it up, you know, 35%, 65%. I don't know the answer. That's the comprehensive part you're talking about. But whatever you want to put together, ultimately, the people that we serve need to decide what they want us to do. I just said we need to stop talking. And we talked about, you mentioned this even several times over last year. We talk a lot. We don't get anything done. It comes down to the fact that it's not revenue to do what we want to do. So if we're going to do it, it comes down to people have to support it. You got to get this question in front of the people, put the comprehensive idea, and dedicate your market money, approve it to the people, we're going to do what they tell us to do. So to me, these are priorities. And I'm willing, it has to be, tell us yes or no.
And I think you could break it up on the ballot. What I think rich does, problem is they put everything in one boat. And you're right, the economic development portion of that, they didn't have a plan, so it took the entire thing down.
Right.
So if you're going to put it on the ballot, maybe you could put it on two or three different things and say, do you agree with this? Yes, no, and so forth.
Right. So If we get, if we get there. I was living in the city. It's, you've got to have, you got to have a plan that people trust, that the government knows what they're asking for. The lack of trust is why that thing failed. And I don't know how to, I can't, I don't know how personally to sell drainage, 2 billion equals whatever. So others are going to have to come up with, hey, if we're going to push that forward, it's going to have to have a real plan that citizens can trust that we will deliver and know what we're talking about.
What is worth, the interest bank arena, I think, proved to the people of the county, we did a good job on that. And I wasn't in here then, but the people who were here, did a great job on that. I assume that if there's any type of sales tax question, it's going to be legislature first to authorize a vote of the people. So that's, again, you're not talking 2023, you're talking 2024 at the earliest. And then that, again, you have to develop a comprehensive idea, the legislature then allows us to put it in front of the people as the way we do this. But we have to have a vision on what this looks like. And I, and I see the wisdom of splitting this up, I also see the wisdom of putting it together. I think that's one thing we can debate and talk about on strategy on what's the best way to go forward. But at the end of the day, we have got a lot of responsibility, a lot of ideas, but there's no revenue to support any of this. We're turned.
Can I pipe up? Sorry. So I've heard the conversation now, and I think these have come up several times, about a sales tax measure, these are the things I just heard that came out. So we are talking about 2024 budget, but I do agree that based on what I've heard about how the arena sales tax went, we do have to have specific asks and specific plans. And so it sounds like we have one for mental health that's going to come with the magic wand approach that Joan's going to present. So maybe we can get some dollars out of that. In terms of a jail or fentanyl, I'm not sure I know enough. So maybe one of the things for discussion of the 2024 budget development is, should we include funding to study these things, to come up with what we want to ask? Or do we do that today in preparation for 2024 legislative session? Because I'm going to try and keep bringing this back. What are we, what are we talking about for the next six months and trying to adopt? And these are big, huge problems. And we do, we talk, and then other things happen. But, you know, we need to, I think, define the dollar ask, because we need to know what to ask for to put together projections for you all. We need to know kind of what timeline are these going to be, like the arena sales tax where it was 30 months, and it was infrastructure, whatever was left over, subsidize the operations and capital improvement, can it be used for operations, or is it truly just intended to stand it up? And then do we need some other kind of revenue stream? So these are the kinds of questions that I would like to push us to answer as staff, so that we can give you good recommendations if there is support to put forward to any kind of ballot measure, recognizing that we may also have to pay for that, that election, that ballot as well.
I would say, Chairman, I would say, I think this is a worthwhile conversation. I think the timing's premature, because we need to see what the legislature's going to do with statement on how, and we need to see what the legislature's going to do with the potential biomed school. I think all of this is premature until we have that. And we want to let them get that out of the way before we start talking about our capacity to have incremental revenue and us doing it ourselves. I think it'd be wise and behooves this commission to let them settle that issue before they see that we're actually even considering having, doing this ourselves and raising money ourselves. So. But there's also a model that we can glean from at Oklahoma City that has done their MAPS programs and to see how they've ordered some things. There are opportunities to glean. But I would say that, I've been an individual that says incremental service needs is going to require incremental streams of revenue. So I'm not against any of this. And I particularly think that it's a worthwhile conversation. But I would say that we maybe pump the brakes a second, let staff with some, that would be my thought, and see what the legislature comes back with, what they want to find. And, and see what the legislature comes back with, what they want to find, and what this looks like.
I also agree, it's premature for the 2024 budget right now, because we can't get this through the legislature in time to impact anything. But we've gotta concentrate now on the 2024 budget on what we can impact.
Well, I think that's where a lot of the problem comes in, is we wanna be able to start making changes with these different things. However, we can't do the comprehensive plan until we have all the pieces in place, and that's what we're waiting on. So, I think we have a good idea of where we wanna be, but until some of those pieces fall into place, there's really not a lot we can, we can do.
Let me say, let me say that if this was something we wanted to go forward with, is a 2024 session, a 2024 fall vote at the earliest, which means if it passes, there's probably, revenue starts flowing in, you probably won't see this until the 2026 budget.
Right.
So it's a 2026 budget, if we start today, before this, this starts becoming reality.
So, one thing I'm gonna put on my list, then, is to revisit with you all, if you want to add funding into some kind of contingency or something, and, within the 2024 budget, as these pieces start to fall, so that we would have a funding source if we wanna do any study or analysis on any of these. Is that okay to, to at least do that for now, and then kind of maybe table it?
Analysis, we can't fund these things, but we can do analysis.
We sure can, to give us some dollars. Okay, I'm going, sorry, Tom. Back to fleet.
Yeah, so, I'm looking at comm care, drainage, flood, fleet, some degree too. These are, these are not necessarily so much budget issues as they are analysis issues and study issues. These are port out issues, so the commission understands the breadth of the situation, and then can react to that however the commission wants to react to it. I don't know that it's gonna impact or not impact the 2024 budget, but if we don't start with comprehensive analysis and some giving you big picture approaches, I don't know how we'll ever get the second base on this thing. So we have to at least provide you, to, to Joan's point, here, here's the best model. It's perfect. Here's what it's gonna cost if we, if we do that. We've already got that on drainage. Here's the best model, here's everything needs to be done, here's what it's gonna cost. We could create the same thing, just briefly mentioned fleet. We've got county employees transporting clients in their personal vehicles. There's culpability, liability issues with that protocol issues. That's how this came up on Friday. We could do an analysis on what it would take to fix that. Not expecting anything in 2024, but we at least lay the numbers on you so you can get the breadth of the problem, and give you a best case scenario, and then you make budget decisions past that. Seven, five and six, public safety and quality of life issues are not true budget impact issues yet. I think this is, again, we talked, I think the public safety discussion is much needed, where you bring all stakeholders in a room, and we understand what the issues are. And so that the commission and the councils, councils plural, other cities, can look at this problem comprehensively, and we can attack this from a community perspective. I think that is, can summarize number five and number six. I don't know that those are budget issues for you this year. And I don't know if we're, if we're skewing off, I mean, to me, compensation's a budget issue for you this year. That's why you need direct workshop, you need to direct dollars to that. To some degree, maybe comm care and mental health would get some, but the comprehensive analysis is gonna be way too much to bite off in a budget year. So if we give you analysis and study, I just wanna make sure we're working toward what you, as commissioners, want to see us work toward, and give you results in public where we can debate and talk about and talk about it. Am I right on five and six, although we do have potentially a direct ask coming from EP?
Yes.
That could, will be an impact to the 2024 budget if the commission wants to roll that way. So, I don't know how you wanna handle six.
I think we don't have our hands around the overall funding dollars, and we don't really have direction on where we all collectively think would be best spent, fighting fentanyl, helping whatever. So that's probably a separate, probably a separate workshop with what we think options would be, but premature, because we don't really know the number that we can. But, and right now, what we've got is basically an escrow, waiting direction.
Good waiting.
Right?
Yes.
Do we have a timeframe that we have to spend?
No.
Oh, here.
No, we could turn them up just a little bit.
Okay. So, that, that just, to me, that helps. I mean, share, between Sheriff Easter, for sure, community, I don't know. But that's probably a workshop.
But we had a workshop the other day, and I, I don't know if we need, we're gonna need to get it on our agenda to approve it, but I think that, I think there's consensus, I hope there is, that we fund the request from the, the forensic science center.
Yeah, forensic science.
I think that the request that the sheriff put in for two social workers is something that we ought to be working towards. And we got the money there right now. I don't know why we wouldn't go ahead and take those two things right off of our to-do list, and then move forward after that.
I think there is a desire to help that equipment, one type of equipment purchase for, for Dr. Sted, if you want. I'm in favor of putting that on the agenda for us to discuss and maybe approve.
So we took the themes that we discussed in here, we're putting dollars in each of those themes out, and then the commission, in a meeting, can publicly take action on any of those. Pick them off the list. If you wanna fund a piece of equipment, or you wanna fund a position, guys can do that at any meeting. But let me get you the comprehensive list of those themes and the dollars associated, and you direct me on what you wanna talk about.
Question on number six, quality of life. Hypothetically, if EP does come and they're asking for money, how does that, how do we, how would we approach funding that? Is that a CIP? Is it depending upon a number?
So, depending on the number and how, how you all would want to pay it out, I think I've heard different figures in the past. The way we did it with the zoo was there was a, they came and made the ask, presented the master plan, helped you all understand whatever questions you had. Then the county entered into a funding agreement with them that structured that it would be a three-year funding strategy, so, and we built that into the budget then, without going through a decision package or anything like that. We added 2 million per year over the course of three years, and then made those payments in January of that budget year to the zoo for them to spend toward it. So since we are not constructing it, it would not, that's why it doesn't count as a CIP. We're giving them money for them to construct it. So, that could be done in however you all want to do it, just through a contract.
I see on number six, I see a, a comprehensive discussion. We had, we had a conversation with the city, which, all, a year, year and a half ago, about doing something together with entertainment, between county and city. I think we resurrect that and bring that back to the front. The other, secondary topic is EP specifically. We need to have Adam come in, give you the, and, and the public, give you the breadth of the project, the breadth of the ask, if that becomes a budget. Does anybody know when he's planning to do that? Have Sarah, is he hiding on the floor?
I don't know when he's planning to. I know in this budget cycle, but that's pretty broad. So I'm not exactly sure when the ask will come.
Well, and so we will get, I'm gonna ask follow-up questions for you, but one of those follow-up questions will be, how do you want to look at the programs in the community that are budgeted through the budget, whether that be those types of things that are baked in, Child FC Center, T-CAM, River Fest, maybe Action Center, or if it's asks like that, how do you want to receive those asks this year? And so that'll be a, a topic that we'll have here in a little bit. So we can jump into that now, or we can wait till then, however, however you all would like to do that.
Is this a conversation that would broaden to future requests outside of those, meaning what I call guardrails around?
I don't, I think we would do that through a workshop process. I think for now, what we need to understand is, for 2024 budget, and it doesn't have to be today.
Right.
But for the 2024 budget process, how do you wanna receive those requests? Do you want to have some kind of bucket of funding that we set aside that people compete for? Do you want to allow people who have had funding to continue to just have the funding at their current levels with some kind of, you know, basically warning that this is last year, next year you're going to compete for it? And then we can go through, after we understand the expectation of how you wanna get those funds, what guardrails you wanna go through? Do you wanna require outcomes? Do you wanna require some kind of reporting out? Do you want them to come back on a periodic basis? Do they, we can do this in any way. We just, right now, we essentially cut checks.
So there's no process.
Twice a year, four times a year. It's very simple, depending on what we've worked out with those folks. They come through with a funding agreement. At various times in the past, we've had different requirements that go with those. Right now, there is no standard. And I think that's the policy that the manager has drafted. That probably is still something for you all to discuss, is what exactly, what expectations do you want to set? And then we, as staff, will follow those through, and make sure you get what you want.
I'll solicit their.
Sorry, I know.
Yeah, we need to have guardrails on this, and we need to have policies. That's, that's a whole separate topic. I think Lindsay's gonna cover that again, but we need to bring that back in front of you. And, and, yes, we need some decision process. I have, I have drafted policy, if, if the, and I'll, and I'll shove it out to you all again. If the concept there is to pay the, and that, that policy has written kind of grandfather, if you will, T-CAM and other things that we currently have embedded in the, in the budget. If you wanna cull those out and publicly talk about those every year, that's, we'll have to amend that current policy. If that's the question.
As long as we're not setting anybody up for an expectation of having a bucket of money that we're not necessarily in.
Right. I'll just, let me finish this one real quick, and then I think Lindsay has another set of topics to talk about. We will provide, again, we had drafted this two or three years ago, state mandate that services versus non-state mandate to take the services. We'll get to progress, and it steers us in this direction of this court service discussion that we had on Friday. I will tell you, everything that the county does, everything is important. By the way, we wouldn't do it, we'd already cut it by now. So, but there are some things that are state-driven, that even if the commission wanted to get out of it, I don't know we can get out of it. There are some things that are not. So we will provide you an updated comparative list of that, and we can take that power if you want. That's, that's what I heard on Friday. So.
Yeah, I think I was wanting to brought that up, Tom. It's just more that, an awareness, not only for the commission, but an awareness for the citizens to know. And, you know, if there's eight departments that we do 100% of their work, or another five departments that are percentage-wise, we do this, and they, you know, that's what I think, just this catch-up. And plus, I think it would help us on our legislative agenda as we, is there something that's really eye-opening for us to say, we need to, we need to look at this? And I'm not, I'm not trying to be divisive between us and the state. I just, it's time for us to fully understand, and the citizens. If anything, we, we should talk to the, to the public on this. So.
So of these seven, this is all what we recorded, what I reported, and we got confirmed from some other staff, but what we thought were priorities heading into the budget year. Anything else that, back something off of this, who wants to proceed down the pipe with this, or anything you wanna add to that? I don't know if you wanna, well, Lindsay, I think she's gonna offer you another opportunity to maybe amend or add something. So, unless you.
So if you remember, I asked you all to do some homework on a Friday afternoon, because I'm just a bad person. But one of the things that we had talked about is your budget calendar. And so Lori and I had had that list of dates. And there were two specific things that we wanted to follow up with you regarding. The first is your May budget hearings. In the past, we have had those hearings. Every department has been, before you, we have given them a template to complete for their budget requests, their decision packages. Last year, we tied in some of the details on their staffing levels, because we, there were so many crisis issues. What we would like to know is, how would you like to have that information presented to you? I know Commissioner Bayes has cut us you at a slight disadvantage, but for, for the four of you who were here last year, was that the way you liked to receive information? Is there different information you'd like to have? Do you wanna trim the hearings back and have more in writing? Or, or was that meaningful? What, how can we best get you the information you need, recognizing that your schedules are ridiculous and very hard to schedule around? So make sure we use your time the very best way.
Ah, go ahead, David.
Well, thank you. I, I like the budget hearings, first of all, but I take them in like half-day chunks instead of full-day chunks, because by the end of the full day, why, your attention span isn't so great. So, half-day chunks work best for me. That's just Dave. The other thing is that I appreciate all of the assistant county managers that we have, but I really like hearing from the departments themselves rather than from the assistant county managers, because they, they know their project and their mission better, I think. And we can dig down and ask them questions, they're right there to respond to us. So, I'm not trying to take anything away from the assistant county managers to brief us, but I, I like the vision chiefs better.
For that purpose, right, not just in general.
If, my personal feeling is if, if a department, if 10 of the 42 departments are operating, they don't really have a request, it's just more of a report. If we go with these all-department decision packages, that's all. If work that's, that's tall, then I'm not sure which commissioner keeps all of it. It's, it's, if, if the status is okay, I'm okay. But, and out of respect to the department managers, maybe, maybe it can go all right. I question any micromanaging that may appear from the commission to a, to a manager without the, without the input. So I, I hear what you're saying, Commissioner. I, I kinda respect the chain of command of, you know, rusty presenting stuff on behalf of those departments. But I, I understand if you'd like to have the manager themselves talking to us. I just don't want to micromanage back to the managers, if that's the sense. Anyway, just my thoughts. Are you all filled?
I was, I was gonna say, I just like it the way it is, but after hearing Commissioner Dennis, I actually agree with him. I think that smaller chunks would be better. I, I disagree with Commissioner Meister just a little bit, only because, to me, this is one of the greatest learning opportunities we have as commissioners. Dig into what these departments do. You get, you, we get performance measures, we get to encourage the staff, we get to understand their challenges. I don't know that we walk away with a negative saying that we're beating up on these people. I don't, I don't feel, anybody feels that. Maybe I'm wrong, maybe I'm myopic, and I don't see what I, I don't see what others maybe see. But overall, I think it's positive for them to be able to share with us what they do, and help us understand better what they do, and help us be more sympathetic to the challenges that we have across the organization. I think that this is a, this is one of the, out of all the things we do in a budget process, this is the, probably the most important part of the entire process. So I would like to spend as much time as needed to maybe even expand on it a little bit by taking it a little bit slower. And those departments that are maybe more ready, move them to the front. They don't have to be Public Safety Day, we don't have to have, you know, EMS right next to fire necessarily. I think it's okay to be different. If someone's ready to go first, let them go first. If someone needs more time to prepare, let them go later in the, in the process. That's fine with me, too.
I agree. I mean, I think it's the most important thing that we do is to prioritize the budget. So having the best understanding of what the actual needs are, hearing it directly from the managers, I think is really important, because we can ask questions and not have to wait for more follow-up. We can just have that dialogue. So I.
This is exactly the argument we had internally, exactly the same.
Sounds like.
And I just got overruled.
It's, it's.
It's all good.
The conflict is, you know, information, personnel time management, we have the conflict here. We can, for those of us that argue this, this takes a lot of time. It's your time, it's the people's time. So if that's how you want it, we will, that's how we do it.
You know, one more thing you could do is if there's really no asks, let the commissioners know we're not really asking for these. If you wanna get a briefing, come to the meeting, but you're, you're released, so to speak, from that con. If you're busy, this is the day where you don't really have to be there if you don't wanna be there. If you wanna be there, we would have to present. I don't care about that idea.
These priorities, clearly, we wanna really drill in on these. And so these departments that have a touch point on what the commission already is, that's where we really spend the bulk of our time. If they're, I'm with the chairman on some of this, if there's something that's status quo, I don't know that we want to burn out 20 minutes of a flow-through presentation by the commission, when we could use that 20 minutes to burrow in on something that's more exigent for the commission to, to be talking about. We'll, we'll work something out. We're here again, we'll, we'll work out a little ground on this.
So that was helpful. So the next issue on your calendars is the budget session. So if you remember now with revenue neutral rate discussion, we have six weeks from when a recommended budget is proposed and when you all get to adopt it. And in the middle of that, Kelly Arnold gets to send out that super fun mailer that generated lots of questions for you last year and I anticipate will continue to generate lots of questions for you going forward. So one of the ideas, and this is just an idea, would be for each of you to potentially hold some kind of town hall or something in each of your districts in those intervening weeks to give you an opportunity to hear from folks and to come back to the commission and share what you've heard. I know that Commissioner Howell will have other conversations about budget hearings themselves, but that could be one opportunity for some public engagement in that very long period that you must have when questions are going to pop up. And the reason we again suggest one per week is that staff, staff are limited, we can't be in multiple places at once. Now, if you don't care about that, we can make it work, but certainly that's an option. Plus what Lorian had outlined for you is what we have traditionally done the last several years, which is one public hearing during the evening sometime, typically the week before the budget is adopted. And then of course, we are required now by state law to have a public hearing at the same time that you all adopt the revenue neutral rate. Now, you then still have to adopt the expenditure side of the budget and all of the other revenues, but we do have to have a separate vote at the end of that public hearing. And so the last two years, we have had that vote coincide the same day as your adopted budget. Doesn't mean it has to be that way. So we would like your thoughts on process. Again, we don't have to set these now, but we do need to, to be pretty intentional. Your calendars fill up quickly. We know that summer is a hard time to get people, so whatever we can do as soon as we can to get things firmly set on your calendar would be most appreciated. So any thoughts on that?
You know, the, the evening hearings on August the 2nd, we have a BOCC morning, meeting that morning and then a public hearing that evening.
Except we can do this however you want.
Yeah, I, I, I'm not saying we should change when we, when we vote for the last update or anything like that. I think if we just want to call it, again, you might open it, the public hearing, have no one speak, that's totally fine. But if you had a second public hearing the week after in the morning during a regular BOCC meeting.
So are you talking about the ninth?
Yes, the ninth. You can call it a public hearing, maybe no one shows up. But if there was someone that showed up, it gives us a chance to respond to that thoughtfully with potential amendments to the budget that we would adopt two weeks later. And again, I don't mind doing a, a, a call of a third public hearing during the day we adopt the budget, that's fine too. I don't know that I mind extra opportunity. I just don't like calling it two, two public hearings. The second one, there's no time between the public potential speaking and us adopting. To me, that just sounds really negative to me.
Thank the legislature for their public hearing on the article.
So yeah, we can always exceed what they told us. We can do more.
And the irony is when we have a meeting, we have public, they can, public can come to the meetings in ways that have been here.
I think.
It conifies that you have to have a public meeting. Well, that's what we do all year long. We don't, we don't call a special meeting for a public hearing.
Right.
Except for the evening, yep.
So I.
And I agree, I agree, Chair, okay. I say if you call it that and you officially open it and close it, then it, it, it is more intentional, you're inviting them specifically to come in and share the facts of the budget. But I agree with what you're saying.
So would it be simpler if we put together a few sample calendars for you and give those to you and you can maybe pick one? Would that be easier than trying to make sausage from the staff meeting bench? Okay, I'm going to take that as a yes.
Probably so.
Okay.
Commissioner Dennis, Commissioner Dennis has a question.
And I tell you already that we've already scheduled Monday, July 24th, Citizens Advisory Board that evening to discuss the budget we do each year. So that's already on my calendar.
Okay.
If you start having other people schedule it that day, well.
You're laying bids. Got it. We'll put that into any calendar we put together for you.
Smart.
Okay, so there are a few other things that we will need direction on. First of all, the mill levy. What Lorian presented was the assumption of a 29.370 mill levy rate, which is what we went into the recommended last year. Now, the commission did take action to drop that just a bit on the day of adoption. And then of course, we went through technical adjustment and we know that the revenue neutral rate will be significantly different than even this. Last year, it was a full mill less. So what would be most helpful to us is to have some standards or expectations. Are you okay with us proposing a budget that does exceed the revenue neutral rate? And are you okay with us using that 29.370 mills for now, recognizing that there's still plenty of time to debate and discuss between now and when we finalize anything? Okay, I'm not hearing any objections, so I'm rolling with it.
We don't have, we don't have. So the property tax revenue again is infancy as far as an estimate.
Right. And we, we don't even have an official estimate today. We have the 5% unofficial estimate. We won't get an official estimate until June 15th.
As of now, you have a 5% increase official estimate, but.
Right. In terms of, that's the combination of the real estate growth, which you'll hear from marketing tomorrow. Right, Mark. And then personal property changes plus the state assessed utilities, all those combined, we have the 5%.
What we get next year was pretty decent, but it can be adjusted.
So we didn't, I just had a meeting with Mark there and he all of the share that I think the, the appraiser's office is, is fully aware that they're undervaluing property relevant to the sales ratio study. And again, I feel like their office is taking a position politically. I don't mean this in a negative way, but it's like they're worried about actually, if they did what objectively would be done to say, we're going to get back to the sales, sales data, sales data would actually drive what they did, we might see, you know, I'll just say here, it says here, 80% of the properties has an increase of about 10%. On average, the overall average for all properties is going to be increased of about 9%, maybe 99%. But that still probably overall is undervaluing property, property. If, if they did what they, my personal opinion, if they did what was data driven, they went back to sales data to actually drive those numbers, we might see much more than 5%. We might probably see more like 15%.
Yes.
And so I guess my point would be this, I, I would rather, rather than pick any number that happens to be convenient, this is number right now is, we happen to have assessed value growth, we happen to have a historic mill levy number, we happen to have a calculated goal to, to build the budget under. I don't know that I like that process. I would like to split this with the taxpayers. I don't think revenue neutral rate is realistic for large urban counties. Revenue neutral, revenue neutral rate, Senate Bill 13, to stay under that, doesn't seem to be realistic for any urban, any urban county. And I think when you have inflation of somewhere between 7% to 10% in the economy, it doesn't seem reasonable to say we're going to operate the county at no, you know, zero paintings growth in the budget. That's just not realistic. But to split this with the taxpayers, say rather than picking arbitrary number, this maximum number based on historic mill levy rate and whatever, whatever he picks, the assessed value to go up. That doesn't mean it's not the way that we should do this. I, I know that's what we do, but I don't like it. I would like to split with the taxpayers. I'd like to give us a goal of reducing that number by something. And I don't know what the something is, but something less than that. 1%.
That's very helpful.
2%, 1% or 2%. I would argue 2%.
So are you saying instead of taking advantage of 5% assessed value growth, take advantage of 4%?
Yes.
Okay.
But again, again, the pro, the process we follow to me is so arbitrary. I feel, I feel bad trying to explain to the taxpayers, we just picked these big numbers, we built a budget under it and no settlement, I, I don't mean this unkind to anybody, but we, we, these are arbitrary numbers and we somehow build a budget under that number and, and that's what we do. So we can pick a different number.
We can, but I would tell you, I don't, I don't necessarily know that I would categorize it as arbitrary. It's, it's a budget that we have built our dollars around. The assessed value growth is based on growth in our community is what we typically tend to think of. And so that means a higher level of service demand. We know that we are under, understaffed at the moment and we're trying to improve those things. And so we're already running operating deficits. So as long as we can speak to, I think what we're willing to cut out or where we're using fund balance, I think that is completely legitimate. But as we talk about all of these additional things that we want to talk through, it's just, I want to make sure that we are keeping in mind that we are, we are now talking about what do we either cut or, or have to figure out a way to do.
Let me please have a advocate with you for just a second then. They pick a number that we need, forget the process. Decide upfront, we need $540 million or $550 million to run the county. Forget the process that got you here. Make the mill levy whatever it needs to be to make the assessed value times the mill levy equal that dollars. That would be a process that I think is more driven by our needs because here's the problem. We have no control over what Mark does. Mark's picking a number that's not necessarily data driven. He should be, and I, I know he wants to say something right now, but his number is not driven by sales data the way I think it should be. And so my point is, he's picking a number somewhere between no growth and what I think would be data, would be data driven totally. Again, you said 37, 36% growth would be, would get us back to sales data driven numbers. We're somewhere less than that and I don't know why we're less than that. So again, from my perspective, that seems a little bit arbitrary and we're going to live under, under that arbitrary number to build our budget. If you simply disregard that entire thing I just talked about and say, we pick a number that says we need this money, this dollars to run county budget, whatever that number is, I would, I would somewhat agree with you. But that's not what we do. And I know he wants to say something.
The 5% that was stated last Friday, that is something I was pulling out of the air. Lindsay and Lorian asked me where is it safe to start building the budget? And looking at all the information across real property, personal property and state assessed, conservatively, 5%, I say it will not go below that. Will it go up? Yes, as I see the hearing load, et cetera, et cetera. I can, I can be more confident, but right now, conservatively, 5%.
Can I ask you a question then, Mark?
Sure.
So the, this, this report that says that 80% of the properties are going to go increase an increase of average of 10%, 1% decrease of 17% and, and 19% of the properties have no change. If you implement that policy and, and adjust appraised values according to that, okay? Where does that leave us? Where does that leave us on the sales ratio study if nothing else changes? Where, where does it leave, are we, are we in fact in the plus or minus 10% range or are we still outside that range? Because right now, you said we were 70 something percent sales ratio study.
Right.
So this, this, this change doesn't get us in that 90, 90 to 110% sales ratio study. We're still outside that band and we're not going to get there this year, even with the change you recommended.
I understand, but also understand we are up against a wall that we've never been up against before. We have log, we have turnover over 61% in the office. Some of those people can't even participate in some of the processes and some of that is going to be the appeals process. I jumped values way up, I'm packed and I can't serve the, the people. That is a major problem. Also, if I don't have the staff that doesn't have the skills yet to go out and verify sales, that is a major problem. And so I have pools of issues when it comes to staff.
So, so I, what I hear, I hear you and I sympathize with your, that, that challenge. I think it's a serious challenge. But my point is, it's not sales data driven. It is a number he picked that he thinks he can handle in his office. And that's, that's my point. And that number drives our budget maximum. So to me, it is, I'll use the word arbitrary, because that process is not data driven. It is a number he can handle, but the staff challenges, he's, staff challenges he's dealing with.
Mark, any further comments or?
I made my comment.
Okay, well, I, I can understand that there are many variables in this that are not perfect, but it's the best that we have and I think it's a fairly reliable system. And I, I do, if, if we want to say we will capture 4% growth regardless of what the real value comes in at and that's what we will live with, you know, we just need to know from a staff perspective where, where you are comfortable so that we can give appropriate context, excuse me, context and direction to departments as they are submitting requests. I think we mentioned, we had the business needs assessments that were done and there's multiple million dollars of asks from the departments. We know that compensation still has areas that need to be fixed and we know that there are all of these competing capital improvement needs that will likely require either some of, some level of cash funding or bond funding, all of which comes out of property tax supported funds. So what, what we would be greatly assisted by is understanding from the commission kind of where you sit on the revenue side. And if that means we can capture the 4% growth and that's as high as, as you want to go with a 29.37 mill levy rate, again, because that's a stable predictable number, that's great. If, if you want to completely revamp the way we look at property taxes, we can do that too. But the sooner we know that, the better because that's going to be a fairly intensive process. And we work for you, so we will do whatever you want. We just need some direction on, on where we sit. So I am hearing that we are at least okay to plan to exceed the revenue neutral rate. So we will build our budget calendar around that. But we may put together some numbers for you in addition to a mock calendar. We can put together some numbers to help define the revenue conversation so that everybody can get comfortable and get on the same page.
My, my added point, where my head's at is I, I'm really curious to see what the state's going to do. I do think they need to, they're, they're intending to get, because they're not doing LAVTR, right? So they're not depending on us to get property tax relief. I think they're going to try to get direct property tax relief, which will allow us to capture some of the assessed growth in order to pay our bills and perform good government service at the local level. So I'm totally comfortable with the 5%, knowing and anticipating that 5% is a really conservative number to build this budget on and it gives us the framework and the freedom and the flexibility to do some things. But I think the state's going to give some direct property tax relief and I think that that, that gives us some freedom to capture some of the assessed growth with knowing that our constituents are going to get some relief.
Can I make one more comment?
Sure.
I, I'm afraid my comments may come across as offensive. I don't mean that to the appraiser's office in any way. You, I, you're, you're, I think the, the appraiser's office is objective as it can be and they have a, and I refer to you, again, no offense to the skill center, but it's a process box. You have tools and the laws that you have to live within and you do the very best you can. So let me show appreciation to them on that. If he had picked 8% and you came back and said, we're going to shoot 5%, I'd feel really right. See what I'm saying? If he had said, we're, you know, I think the real number is 8%. We're going to try to do, we're going to try, because we can't handle more than 5% this year, I'd feel better. But what I know right now is he said 5 and you said 5. So it's like, the process is we just go max max. I don't think, you know, to me, that's, that's hard to explain to my taxpayers.
I would say that he said 5, but we know it's not going to be 5. We just got a briefing, it's going to be higher. So I think 5 does accomplish assessed, assessed growth while still saying, hey, we're going to, we're going to, we're not going to capture all of it.
I agree. I mean, because 5 accomplishes, it's just a standard to start with. And if it comes in much higher, then I can't begin to have that conversation. Sarah?
No, I agree. I think we've discussed it enough.
Can I give you one final comment? I would love it if you would have a number that says what 4% looks like and the second number should be the high end, where's what we think really need to fix the problems in the county. If I'm being exceeded 5%. So here's on high, here's on low, here's the range. You commissioners, where do you want to be?
Make sure it's the deficit, yes.
If, if doing two sets of votes is not a burden, then that's all right. Otherwise, you've heard from four commissioners that 5 is the number. You've heard from one commissioner, 4 is the number.
We will, we will choose the 5, but I will, I did offer to give the 4%. So I will be happy to do that and throw, it, it'll be quick and easy and.
The calculation.
So, okay, I have a few other things, but I'm going to go through them quickly because we exceeded the hour. So basically this is cleanup from the budget retreat and again, focused solely on the 2024 budget at this time. These are all big ideas, love the big ideas, but I'm just trying to focus on the next six months. So do you have any questions that we did not get answers for you that day that you have not yet asked? Do you have any additional workshops aside from the ones that have already been mentioned that you would like us to plan for? Other than compensation, employee stabilization, retention slash recruitment? stabilization, retention slash recruitment, do you have other priorities from an employee perspective for 2024? We've already talked about the P T O discussion that will come to you in a compensation workshop. And then the last thing was what I already had mentioned, and we don't, again, I think maybe today is not the day, but we would like some direction on how to proceed with community funding. Whether that be new requests, maybe we just tackle those for 2024 budget year. Whether it's stuff that's already baked into the budget, if you want to look at how that process goes for the 2024 budget year. I know that this has always been a point of concern for all of you. And so we want to make sure that we're meeting your expectations. So we are, Lorian just sent the note Friday to departments. They are starting their base budgets. They're due toward the end of March.
Right.
Okay. So we could require any outside entity to also submit those requests if you wanted us to, or we could give them some extra time. Or we could continue with what we're doing and just start having conversations with them if you want to talk about a different way of doing things, whatever this commission would like to do. So that is my laundry list of stuff. And if you have comments, great. And if not, we'll follow up with you later.
Community stuff related to sponsorship of tables and participation under X dollar that has Tom's discretion or our, our input, we all get hit on various little things that table sponsor, those, that, that, those don't bother me at all. It's, it's the one offs that come in for a large, a larger number that's, that we've experienced the last couple of years created some real concern. So I'm not sure what the policy should look like, but if we just maybe put a budget item in there for discretionary, uh, community stuff, that doesn't mean we have to spend it, but if it's there and we have to, I don't know how you all feel on that. It's, four of us experienced it. New person, I don't know how you feel on that. There's a number that, not real significant if it's, that's outside an eco-devo thing.
Right.
Or outside a major, a major thing that would come as a public discussion anyway. Go ahead.
Well, I agree that there are a number of things that we have dinners that we need to go to and so forth. And the public expects us to be at these type of events. So those are not that great of expense for us to do that. So I think we need to continue those. Those are important because we need to be out there. The issue that I have is a lot of these one offs that come into us. And with those, we're picking winners and losers. Is this one that came into us today more important than this one that is going to come in tomorrow? And we've got over 2,000 nonprofits here in Sedgwick County. So with 2,000 nonprofits and one or two come in with big requests, then suddenly we've got 1,995 of them that don't get any funding from us whatsoever. And I, I think it's, the public elects us to make decisions, but they have an opportunity to, for them to decide how that they're going to spend their own dollars and which ones of these 2,000 nonprofits that they want to support. And now suddenly, we have certain groups that come in and say, well, that's all well and good. The public can give where they want to, but we want you to give the public money to us. But I think that's wrong. I don't, I don't want to be giving public money with me making the only decision when the public has an opportunity to make those decisions. So I don't like a fund because once again, we're picking winners and losers no matter what. I really think we need a tighter policy, but that's not our job. That's the public's job to decide which ones of these nonprofits to support. It is not our job to make winners and losers.
I have a crazy idea. How much is our, how much revenue do we get from our sales tax currently? You said 35?
I think we did about 35 last year. Let me look. I actually have the quarter. You can keep talking. I will page it.
So let's just say roughly 17, probably 17 and a half million dollars is half that. And that's for property tax relief, right?
Yes. Last year, I'm sorry, we received 38.2 million.
Okay, so half that's 36 million, roughly.
19.
I'm sorry, 19. 19? What? My math is off. 19 million dollars. Maybe, I can see the idea to limit our exposure to these never-ending ideas. If you placed all of these discretionary funds under that, half of our sales tax revenue, so the other half goes to infrastructure as it does today, but you place W S U, the zoo, E P, the historic museum, T C M, the arts, everything else under that 19 million, you're now limited to a zero sum game of revenue. In other words, it just funds that to a limit, and there are no more dollars at that point. Once it's gone, it's gone.
I would tell you for now, I don't think we even come close to touching that 19 million with our community development culture and our money. Because W S U's its own 1.5 mil, so that's.
That's about 9 million right now, right?
That's its own thing.
Okay.
We could, we could cap a percentage of that.
Well, you do have a percentage of that. Then it's like, this is now the fund that, that is discretionary for these things. And it's, when the money's been allocated and spent throughout the money, that would be a way for us to be driven by economy rather than politics.
So would you want to do that based on a monthly basis for actuals or prior year actuals?
Prior year.
Okay.
I don't know. I, I tend to agree with Commissioner Dennis' comments about, but the picking winners and losers has not been something that I was proud, that I was proud of the last couple of years with individual commissioners or somebody else could pressure the sand. This is the best for everybody. I question that, so. Okay. What else, Tom?
That's all we got.
Hour and 20 minutes.
Okay.
19 minutes.
That's all.
All right. Thanks, everybody. See you tomorrow.